Great, I'd like to call the meeting of the Chittenden Central Supervisory Union to order at 6:39 PM. Before we proceed, is there any changes to the agenda as warned? I have none to recommend. Are there any? Okay, moving on. Visitors and employees to be heard. So with that, we will move into the board reorganization. This is the annual reorganization of the Supervisory Union Board. Per policy, the respective chairs of each board, local board serves as the three officers/executive committee of the SU Board. It's on a regular rotation and has been specified and followed for time known. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to have a motion, a motion supporting the slate of officers, the following. The election of the chair would be, the Westford Chair would be Mark Draper. He would assume that normally upon election. Election of the vice chair, which is Michael Smith, which is Prudential Committee, and the election of the clerk, which is the U-46 Chair, myself, Brian Donahue.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion with regards to the slate of officers from anyone besides Michael? Hearing none, all those in favor of the slate as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? With that, I turn it over to the vice chair.
Okay, so the next item that we have to conclude with the reorganization is the rest of what's in your org notes about authorizing bonding. In fact, I could probably just make the motion here. Move to authorize the bonding of required individuals, authorize payment of warrants upon presentation, authorize the board legal counsel.
As see Leopold and Wells.
Leopold and Wells. Authorize the Chair to appoint members to committees. Authorize the Chair or clerk to sign warrants on behalf of the board. To assert the newspaper of record, which we only have one, so the Burlington Free Press, and to affirm the meeting calendar for the ensuing school year.
So move.
Second.
Can we have discussion?
Yes, we may have discussion.
The calendar, I think, has some names that need to be changed. I think Tim, Tim's name still shows on the PC. And so it's, I think it's just a few things like that, nothing major. Thank you, Marla. We can do that.
Sorry?
Yes, PC just had a new member join their board, so we can include his name.
That's Patrick Murray.
Correct.
Okay, is that, is that the only, that specific spot, or was there?
Well, I don't know how Lori Singer should show, should the new principal that's going to take over July 1, his name show on there instead of Lori Singer? Yes.
And Jason's no longer on the CCSU.
Right.
Correct.
Kansas. Yeah. So board member updates from your recent reorganization and the one administrator.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any others? Any other discussions, additions, and any of the other parts of what was moved? Okay, hearing none, then all those in favor of the last motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. All right, so included in your org notes was some federal guidelines on transgender bathroom access. Actually, I should say, a note in here from CCSU. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? I mean, obviously, this is a big topic lately on the national news.
Aye.
Andre?
Has this been given some guidelines through all the schools as far as presented to the students? We're seeing the policy and the guidelines on what we might adhere to, but have the students and faculty and all concerned been made aware?
So we were waiting first to see if this is the direction the CCSU Board accepts moving forward, and then with the Board's approval of this statement, we've shared it with our principals, and we'll discuss that at our ELT tomorrow, our leadership team meeting, and then once that conversation happens, we'll talk about how they'll communicate with their faculty and staff, and then we'll talk about.
Communication to the students.
How to communicate this change to the students. So that's the way we're kind of approaching the chain of command on it.
Good question. In that, there was one thing in that letter that was sent out, or is it, there was a wording in it of something about others, students and then others, so I thought it was a little open.
But then, other people in her schools, so I just think that means if a faculty member or a parent that's there for an activity, it's, it's in the mind.
CCSU will be accessible to students and other people in our schools based on their identified gender.
Yeah. Isn't other people a little too broad? I mean, you could have somebody come in off the street that doesn't belong in the school. Wouldn't you want it to say authorize school personnel and visitors or something?
What if they're a visitor to a school function?
They'd be allowed to use the bathroom regularly anyway?
Yeah.
Or vendors, you know, or, I mean, there's.
To everyone.
Yeah.
Everyone within the building.
And so other people. But if you have a better wording.
I was thinking maybe it will be accessible to students and other authorized individuals.
That's what I, well.
I mean, because that, that covers guests, covers vendors, covers.
Wouldn't all users cover everything?
Sure.
I just think you're gonna, I think it's challenging because this could be teachers, this could be, and then this could be outsiders. I hear what Marla's saying, but I don't know if this is the place to, to be talking about who can be in our schools.
That's a different, different area. Because you have visitors on a regular basis.
Yep.
Yeah, I wonder if it's just a matter that across the CCSU will be accessible to people based on their identified gender.
Period.
Yeah, and that's not denoting who the people comprise, it's just saying in general, people.
Yeah, I mean, when the school is open for an AAU basketball tournament and there's 75 people from different communities in here.
Yeah, I think if we try to parse it, we're gonna be in big trouble.
Yeah.
I think how Brian worded it sounds better than "and other people," though. I just, okay. Well, I think you should say to students "and people" instead of "other."
Okay.
To students and people based on, that sounds good. What should it say? I didn't hear that.
Just take out.
Let's get rid of "other."
Other. Or maybe you should say adults.
No.
So this isn't more, some action, are you just looking for consensus then?
Yeah, I think so.
Motion and consent.
I mean, this, we have to recognize, this wording sits now on top of federal guidelines, on top of the state guidelines, and on top of a number of other requirements as a recipient of both federal and state financial assistance. So, you know, we're layering, we're layering nuisance over nuance at this point in time, and I just, I think that the, I think what Judy needs from us is some consensus that philosophically, we support this, that there isn't a problem within the governance structure, that, that we're concerned about it, and then I think that, again, probably the formal policy is, is gonna come right from federal guidelines and state requirements.
Yep.
That's correct. I'm just waiting for, you know, to be able to respond to people who are calling in to say what, what's the Board's position on this, so.
Adherents.
That's right.
So I'm just gonna go, I mean, unless there is voice, voice of disagreement with this in any way, I think the Board gives their consent, their affirmation of this statement.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. All right. We have a few folks from the Unified District Board in our presence, so we have an agenda item for, for a night, for an update.
So I guess I'll start, and I had a whole list written down, I didn't forget, so, so I need help from others. So since your last update, the Board has adopted some guiding principles to use in decision making. You can, and I should probably say this too, has started a blog. If you just Google EWSD.org, that will take you right to the blog. And if you look through some of the meeting recaps, each meeting has like a three-point recap, you'll find a link to the guiding principles. So we've done that. We had our required annual meeting on May 4. Thanks to Brian and Mark Draper for helping us with some of the motions. I would say it was, this is an understatement, was not well attended. RETN was there, and they did, you know, film it, so there is access available if people wish to watch it, and the minutes are available on the website. The project manager came to one of our meetings so that the Board could meet him, and I think that was helpful for people to have a face to go with this person's name. He also led us in a discussion of governance, and we had been having some discussions about the fact that Essex Town is what is known as a policy governance board, they have adopted a specific form of governance, and CCSU is not, and how we can manage that. And Dan's suggestion to us that was that we almost started what usually is the last thing that a policy governance board does, but in our case, he felt like even if we wanted to go to the policy governance route, we didn't have time to do that work right now. But the big thing that drives policy governance work is what is sometimes called an ends policy, but can also be referred to as a student outcomes policy. And clearly, that's something you want regardless of what your governing structure looks like. So that's something we'll be looking at over the months before July 1. We receive updates at each meeting from Judy and Mark about how the transition work is going. It's impressive the amount that's been accomplished already, but it's also daunting to look at how much is left to be done. The, I appointed task teams, and those task teams are at work. One task team is working on communication, and they are involved with the blog, setting up the blog and populating that with minutes and, you know, the three outcomes from, takeaways from each meeting and other pertinent information.
I think Keely and Liz should be recognized as to what a great job they do at communications.
Yeah, they, they're really working hard, and they are also heavily involved with the work that's going on around the Meli May Grant. They're working with folks from Everyday Democracy to try to identify the best way to communicate with various constituencies through, I hope, the Unified Union. So that's the focus of their work. They'll be interfacing with some other committees and the work that they're doing. Policy is gonna start with the 27 required policies, and so that work is beginning to be underway. Negotiations is just what you think it is. There has been communication with the two teacher associations. Those groups are in the process of forming one association, but that's gonna take some time. And we believe that there will be a meeting before the end of school to start between the two parties, to start talking about how things will proceed. And finally, we have a superintendent search task team that met for the first time today, and will be working with the Board to identify a timeline and a process for identifying a superintendent that will start on July 1. So what have I forgotten?
I think you got it.
You did, I don't. We've attended some workshops that have been coming our way in preparation for what's coming ahead of us or where we're headed. I believe in addition to the 27 principles, I think there's a transportation that you're starting to undergo.
I think that, is that a mandatory policy?
Right.
It is.
That's within the 27, thank you.
Yes, it's within the 27 mandatory, but, but you're right to bring up the fact that, that there have been some trainings. Some of us went to a policy governance training, some of us have gone to a training on the new health insurance policies. VHSBA will be getting rid of all its old policies and bringing on four new policies, so that will be a subject of bargaining, but there, the old policies won't be available after July 1, 2018. There is a workshop, a VSBA sponsored workshop on negotiations, regional workshop on negotiations, which several members attended, so thanks for that reminder.
There's some, in that presentation, there was some very defined timelines that everything has to be taking place.
Yep. And it's gonna be a tough year because all school districts are gonna have to be negotiating, particularly the, the health insurance changes. The other thing I should have mentioned, as I look at you, Michael, is that at our last meeting, we met with the Parks and Recreation Study Group to be updated on their progress and to understand what they were looking for from us, and that will probably be a subject on the agenda our next meeting, which is on June 7. So we meet the first and third Mondays of the month, Tuesday of the month. I believe we will follow the general practice of not meeting in July, although task teams may need to be in July. Anything else? Diane, do you?
No, you're good, you're good.
Okay.
She's very efficient. That's why she was elected Chair.
I'm just curious with, there's, there were more districts than I think were anticipated that have chosen to go for the Unified Union. So do most of those, are most of those in the same situation we are in needing to renegotiate?
I don't think.
Like if you were inside a SU, like a.
Still, the healthcare plans need to be.
Yeah, they, their contract won't be different like ours is.
Okay.
You know, if they had a free-year contract that isn't set to expire.
Gotcha.
But I think a lot of districts knew this health insurance change was coming, so they set up their contracts to expire at the end of this coming school year, so Chris Leopold and others have been warning, starting at the Lake Morey, you know, the SBA conference last fall, that it's gonna be a tough year because everyone has this on their plate, and I think ours is just more complicated because we'll be trying to merge separate teacher contracts and separate support staff contracts, so in the timeframe, and.
Right.
Lawyers and human served directors who do negotiations are gonna be very busy.
Great. Well, I don't know, do you want me to say a few words about policies? I, where the policy committee will be meeting the first Tuesday in June to go over some details on four policies, transportation, class size, IT use, and proficiency-based graduation requirements. And the big one still continues to look like transportation. So we're contrasting and reviewing these policies between the CCSU policies as compared to VSBA, as compared to Essex Town, to get a feel for the differences and the advantages, disadvantages of one policy over the other. And there have been some aha moments thus far, but, but one thing that, the big, one of the big items that we have to consider, the whole Board needs to consider as a part of the RED study was the offering of some transportation in Essex Junction. And so I did make some time to look over the national standards, and in Essex Town, if we established a walking policy, surprisingly, the northern part of the school system, Sandhill, Tanglewood, LaMell, all those areas, they really don't have any sidewalks. And when you look at the national standards for walking policy and guidelines, there are almost one for every state in the Union. There is a whole proliferation of things that you should consider for safety, and so from a walking policy, I didn't see any changes that I could honestly recommend for the, for Essex Town, for the northern part, but on the southern part, there are a lot more sidewalks, and so it seems to be a crossing issue near the school. So maybe a crossing guard or whatever, don't know, but it's always a possibility. Now, one of the things I think I'm gonna need some help on is the one in the junction.
So I, I think we talked about this a little bit last time. I, and this is a place where I think the communications task team is gonna come into play. I envision a fairly public discussion. I think your committee is gonna need to lay out options that are legal, but then I think there's gonna have to be a pretty public discussion about what people want.
Right.
I mean, I think the, the other piece that will be on the table is high school transportation in Westford.
Right, and that was, that was the other surprise. I always thought Westford had the high school, then I learned, no, it doesn't look like that's happened.
Never has.
Come on, fill the car up and bring them in.
Right. So, yeah, you're absolutely right, and, and so there's a lot to do, but right now, it's, the majority part of the work is to compare and contrast, to make, draft a report for the whole Board.
Make recommendations.
To make recommendations, right.
Right, and I think that's the other important point about all of these task teams, is that they're working on specific areas, but they won't be taking action without the full Board's approval.
When you, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but if you're looking at transportation, I would think with the high school, the driver's ed comes into play as to how is the, how does one get chosen to participate? Is it based on whether they live in a community that has no transportation? In other words, what, what, has it decided who gets driver's ed?
I don't know if that has anything to do.
Well, it may, because if it's a community that does not have transportation now, and there are students that can't get their licenses until they have driver's ed.
Yeah, but I think you, you can't be in this new unified union. I think you'd have a hard time meeting the requirements of the law if you're transporting some high school students and not others.
No, I'm not referring, it's the ability for the students to access driver's ed in order to get a license so they take and drive to school.
Right, I don't see what that has to do with the Unified Union, school boards, transportation policy.
All right, I brought it for reference to see if the high school policy would meld into that, or whether it's a place for it or not. Thank you, though.
That's a good point.
Okay. Anything else? You guys, you guys have a ton of work.
He says with a smile.
Hey, I've got, well, it was my committee that, you know, took away all the attendance from your, from the annual meeting, because the.
That's right.
Rec Governance.
Everybody was up there.
Committee met that same night, and we had at least seven people in the audience, so.
Three times the number we have.
That's right. All right, so.
Have to be there.
Next up, Judy attended the VSA-VCSCA Spring Conference and has some information to update us on.
On Thursday and Friday, we had 220 registered participants. The major training was on transforming stress and trauma, and how to promote resilience, wellness, and learning by creating safe and supportive schools in Vermont. I think it's a really, it was a presentation that I think Board members would appreciate learning more about, trauma-informed classrooms, and actually, I was thinking.
learning more about, trauma-informed classrooms, and actually, I was thinking about, at our June 6th Carousel meeting, maybe Erin and I doing, sharing some of the slides from the PowerPoint that we received, because it is work that our schools are gonna need to do moving forward, and we really haven't had a learning report coming forward, so Joyce Dorado, who has her PhD and is the director of UCAS Hartz, she lives in San Francisco, did a brilliant job of presenting on stress and trauma and making those connections that teachers need to have, especially when interfacing with students from a trauma-informed background. So, I'm going to save that update for our Carousel and work with Erin to narrow a full-day presentation down to the most salient points that I think board members would be most interested in learning about, but it was very well-attended and thoughtfully delivered, and definitely gave some statistics worthy of note. So, there were meetings that followed and a lot of chatter about the work with unification, and many upcoming votes in June, several districts are coming forward, hearing about some revotes, so that work continues. Superintendents, I would say, I'm so proud of so many of my colleagues, they're working really hard to actualize Act 46, and it's a lot of work to do that and run a district at the same time, or supervisory union, so they were all committed to it. They, at our business meeting, we certainly talked about a world-class education in the state of Vermont, and how our policy has been set into play, and now creating the structures to actualize that direction. So, it was informative, I learned a lot, and it was great to have some networking time with colleagues. More to come.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Now, something we need to act upon is the consent agenda. First, before we have a motion, is there anything that needs to be added to it?
Hold from it.
Hold from it? Hearing none. I guess I'll make a motion to approve warrants, to approve the meeting minutes of March 28th, 2016, and to approve the fiscal year '17 supervisory union budget.
All second.
Second from Marla. Any other discussion? None? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. One last, last bit is to just quickly touch on future agenda items. In your org notes, there's plans for the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Grant approval at the, at Carousel, transportation contract, an update on where we're at in the CFO process. Judy had mentioned that perhaps she and Erin would do further discussion of what occurred at the Spring Conference. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned.